Special meeting of February 27th, 2023 of the Dubuque Community School Board.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to the district strategic plan review, and we're going to hand over the reins to Superintendent Hawkins.
So, good evening. We're excited tonight to do our second report out of our district strategic plan and priority initiatives. And to do so, you can see that our, we have priority initiatives. And on those priority initiatives, you can see the status update. And we keep track of if, if those initiatives are completed, operational, if they made progress, and if some have been canceled. So as we go through the presentation tonight, we will be able to talk about where those priorities are as far as in our system here at work in, in the Dubuque School District. So, to get us started tonight, we've kind of started a new tradition where we're trying to bring some of our priority initiatives to life. So we can have people that are actually doing the work in those priority initiatives come and talk to our school board about how that, what their experience is with those priority initiatives. So, our first pillar is student achievement and development. And to get us started, we're going to go right, we're going to skip a little bit, and we're going to go right to priority initiative number seven. And I ask for the Marshall School students and advisors to come forward. Okay, I'll start first here to get the kids started, okay? All right. So, hello and thank you all for the invite to speak tonight. Thank you, Superintendent Hawkins. I wanted to let you know, you may or may not know me, my name is Teresa Northouse, and I am the media coach at Marshall Elementary. We, I was also the coach this year for the Lego League team. I was fortunate enough to have three John Deere volunteers, three, three of which who could not, of course, be here tonight because they had work issues. But they were Joe Tilk, Jason Leahy, and Hannah Schnelzer. Okay, so, they came to us and they worked with us on the Lego League. Now, before I get started, I want to thank you all for your support of the robotics program here at the Dubuque Community School Districts. Now more than ever, I think it's important for us to prepare our students for the job market, and that is exactly why I really enjoy the first Lego League program. We, often, when you hear Lego League, most people think the kids are playing with Legos, okay? That actually isn't the case at all. If it were just the case, I think that in and of itself may be enough. Because when kids are playing with Legos, it provides them the opportunity to learn valuable skills and strategies, such as the engineering design process. And it gives them lots of practice working as a team and teaches them perseverance. But Lego League is way more than just that. Like, during Lego League, what they do is the children use Legos and they add Legos to their robot, they build attachments, and they have to then program that robot to complete missions. They're given a total of 15 missions, but they only have two and a half minutes to complete this round and try to collect as many points as possible. So obviously, they cannot choose all of those missions. So they have to do some strategic thinking there and determine which missions they can actually accomplish in the realistic time goal that they have. And after they figure that out as a team, they then have to create a project that goes along with the theme of Lego League. And they do research on that project. They put, our team this year, we put together a skit about that project where we had several of our students were board members, and some of them were students from Marshall requesting something. And for those of you who saw it, I think a few of you had an opportunity to see it. It was really, really cute, they enjoyed it. And then after they do that, then they were interviewed by a panel of judges at the Lego League competition. And during that interview process, they're asked about the robot that they designed, they're asked about the coding that they do, they're asked about the innovative project that they have created. And Lego League also, the third pillar is that they are focused on core values. Those core values include things like teamwork, give me a couple others. Innovation. Impact. Impact, discovery, fun, okay? There's a lot of things that we work on. And we talk about those all the time. So those are all lifelong skills that are super, super important. This year in Lego League, I have seen so much growth in these students, and I just wanted to let you know that they wouldn't have been able to do it without this program. They have gained confidence in themselves as they had to become their own advocates. Because during the Lego League process, as a coach and/or a mentor, I am not allowed to go up and speak for the children, they have to do that on their own, okay? So, they've gained their confidence, they've experienced some of the struggles that engineers face on a daily basis when they found something that didn't work. They had to work as a team to fix it and to redesign things so that it would work. I am very proud of the work that they have accomplished, and I'm looking forward to building a team for next year at Marshall. Danielle, do you have anything that you want to add? She's here as our John Deere representative, part of our team member.
Hello, Danielle Tigges, I'm with John Deere. I've had five kids at the district in numerous phases, they range from 21 to 13. And the district, from a computer science standpoint, has equipped all my children well. And, and I'd like to see the continuation of that. As it's evolved, there's definitely been some good programming in high school, seeing an expansion in middle school, and I've always been concerned about the grade school piece. Deere as a company understands now as well that if you're going to feed the pipeline for the next generation of workers, they're going to need these skills. And if we don't hook them on interest when they're young, to realize that this is a good time and it's fun to do, we might not get that. So, I, I view coding and computer science as a second language to this generation. And so I was really excited that we're able to work out some grant money to get the, the first series of, of Explore and Discover at a, at a lower age level in the schools. And that will be a fundamental building block to lead up to these teams. It'll provide equity and access for all of them. Because in the environment I work in, most people do not look like me. I, I would like to see more equity. And we can't build that unless we generate interest at, at a young age so that they can build on through the pipeline in the district as well.
Thank you, Danielle. So now we're going to let the kids kind of talk to you about their experience and what they've done. So Karan, do you want to go ahead and speak first?
Sure.
You can just slide that over to me. Tell us what you liked about Lego League, what were your challenges?
I liked it that how we got to work together as a team, that we had a lot of fun, so we worked together and...
What do you think was the most challenging?
My most challenging part was coding on the computer and about thinking like how we're supposed to get like, all like what speed and what we're supposed to do.
Okay. Did you have any questions, Karan? Or do you have any questions? Can you pass the microphone to the left? Hey Bryce?
Do you have a question?
Yeah?
What grade are you in?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade, and what excites you most about just being involved in STEM? What, what excites you most about being involved in this group?
That I get to see my friends.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I never forget this.
And you can do it next year, right?
Maybe.
Maybe. Yeah, we'll talk to Karan. Go ahead, and this is Bryce?
My favorite part is definitely like having the challenge of finding the problem and then fixing it. And the challenging part is definitely having to remember new lines every time we get new lines. Impossible.
We did Advanced to State, and when we did so, that was a really bad weather weekend, so we needed a couple of our, our students. So they had to, on the fly, they had to learn some lines really quickly in order to present because it wasn't their lines and those two students were gone, we had to make it work. So, you know, that was another skill. That's right. On the fly, how to kind of adjust to that, wasn't it? Absolutely, yeah. All right, what was the most, you said the challenging part and you said the fun part, right? Okay. Go ahead and give Kenzie Teague to talk.
The most fun part was coding because I learned different coding blocks. And the challenging part was it was a mill because it just kept not working.
Was the time a challenge ever for you guys at all?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we had the two and a half minutes, right? And so, when we went to regionals, we actually just did, we actually added an additional mission on from regional to state. We figured out a way to do that in between the two because we did make it to state. So they were excited that they were able to add an additional mission on to make it better for state. Yeah, that's awesome. Good. Okay, and Ashton?
Um, the most funnest part is probably when I made, when me and Deja made like this mini Lego solid panel. And the most difficult thing is having to line it up for like the dinosaur.
Because you have to really get it ready to, like, it has to start from the same place every time, or it's just not going to work, okay? So being that precise. And there were a few parents here today, and I didn't know if they wanted to speak to anything that happened with the kids, or anything that the kids enjoyed, or they noticed within the kids? No? Okay. All right, I do think I did, I was told by one of the parents that, that they think that their son will continue on into middle school, one of our fifth grade parents. They definitely can see their child continuing this path as they enter middle school and getting on their robotics club and their robotics team. And that's really what we're trying to do, is get them interested and excited and wanting to move forward with it. I've actually heard that from a couple. I didn't have as many, didn't have quite as many team members here tonight because there is a choir show tonight, and so that took out a lot of my team members who are at choir right now. But I know they all wanted to be here and to let you all know. Did you have any questions for myself or for the kids?
I just have a comment. One of my sons, he's a computer programmer and he does this for a living, and he loves it. He's going to be so proud to hear that it's starting in the elementary schools, and this is a profession you can take with you and do lots of things. And so, those little problems you have now, it's good that you want to conquer them and learn more. That is great.
Thank you. Thank you. The kids have really enjoyed it. I think we had a lot of fun this year, didn't we? I think that one of their favorite parts, and none of them mentioned it surprisingly, was staying in the hotel when we... I was going to say, how was the hotel at stake? I mean, that was fun, right?
Yeah, I mean, we got to go swimming, right? And so, I'm surprised none of them mentioned it because that was the first thing they told me. But thank you so much for your time.
I want to say thank you to the kids and yourself for coming tonight. Your kids are very brave to get here in front of a group like this and speak to us like this, and thank you so much for coming. I just have one question. How many students, total number of students are involved in your...
Well, actually, with the first Lego League team at this competition level, I can only allow to have 10 team members. So we actually go through an application process where they have to fill out an application, and then we do teacher referrals, and then we sit down with a rubric and figure out which 10 to choose from.
I see.
Cool.
Yeah, because I can only do 10, and I can't do more than one team because I'm only one person. You know, so we can only do 10 by their, by the first rules.
We also want to say thank you to John Deere, you know, the sacrifice that you guys make in all of our buildings, and I've been on Zoom with you before and hear your passion. So thank you so much for investing in our kids.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much. Thanks, you guys, thank you. Yeah, great job. So if we look at priority initiative number seven, that is a checkmark. And you can see that as students are talking about going into middle school, that's one of the things that we pushed for this year to have three teams, one in each of our middle schools, and that has developed. So that'll be great for them to continue on when they get to middle school. So, I appreciate them coming tonight. So we'll back up a little bit now, if that's okay? So, talk about, as we continue on in student achievement and development. Priority initiative number one is about increasing student connections through an addition of new and varied extracurricular activities with an emphasis on additional of culturally relevant activities, clubs, and organizations. And so, just a few highlights, because I know we can go through and we can read through all these things, but Deere and his team have done a really good job of developing the Black Excellence Associations. And so he came and talked about that at one of our ed programs meetings, but those are up and running in all, both middle schools and at ALC as well. So, that's an exciting time for our district. Another great thing is the district is starting to engage in conversations with parents who have come to Joe Maloney and said, "We want a dance team." And so, we're talking about that, what does that look like moving forward, and how do we get that incorporated into our system right now? So, really listening to students and families about what interests they have, and then how can the district go about adding those additional activities for students to keep them involved in, in activities? Because we know that being involved in extracurricular activity is a great way to be connected in school. So, any questions on number one? Priority initiative number two is to explore district community partnerships that provide strong early childhood program, programming while also addressing community childcare needs as part of the Belief Grant. So Lisa Tabakor and her team wrote the Belief Grant, and that's really allowed us to partner with many different partners in the community to look at what does early childcare centers look like, what does wraparound care look like, and how do we take that and move forward from what we're currently offering? And so, I would say that is making steady progress because we are still in conversations about what that looks like and what that looks like as far as in the community as well. So, Lisa, thanks for working on that and, and keeping that partnership alive within the community. Priority initiative number three is about providing professional development for staff that increases the sense of belonging in the classroom and providing students with an optimal learning environment. And so, things that we've done as a district to try to meet the needs of this initiative is, first of all, we provided professional learning around the optimal learning environment for all elementary staff in the month of January. So that was a great PD day and got lots of good feedback back from that, from those presentations. Deere and his team have really met with most of our teachers on Part One and Part Two of intercultural communications and done that professional development with our staff, which we appreciate that, both One and Two, getting those completed by the end of the school year. And then really, our schools have taken this priority initiative and really embedded this into their overall priorities within their school and their own CSET plans. So, schools are looking at how they can embed, you know, looking at behavior, equity, grading practices, PBIS, and attendance, and how can we help the students that are in our schools and our, you know, and, and the, the kids that they have, how do they address those issues with those students? So, that's really been a, a great piece that's moved forward this year as well. Number four, expand the Vertex Initiative with additional career and college readiness experiences for students. As you know, David Moller and his team came and presented to the board, was at last ed programs meeting, really around all the different pathways that we offer for our students as early as in ninth grade. And so, you can see that some of the pathways that were finalized this year were around auto and diesel technicians, business, computer science, construction, early childhood, K-12 teacher education, informational technology, nursing, welding, and registered apprenticeships. So, we have many of our students at the high school level beginning these pathways, which are helping them then to make, in the next phase after graduation, whether that's to go into a career or go into college or some kind of career technology program. So, I, Mark Burns and David Moller have done a great job expanding that Vertex Initiative. So thank you for that. Priority initiative number five is support furthering each school's MT, multi-tiered system of support, MTSS system, worked as outlined in its school plan across all tiers and including academics, attendance, and social, emotional, behavior health. One thing that's happened this winter is that we've had discussions with each elementary school about how they can take their data, their winter data, and how they're making improvement plans for the remainder of the school year. So all those conversations have already taken place, and schools are working to implement those plans into the remainder of their school year. Another big piece in this priority initiative is the fidelity of Second Step and Seven Mindset. So those are the, the two social, emotional learning programs that we've implemented at both the elementary and middle school level. And then, really, in the high school level, we're doing some lessons in our 9-12 advisory periods around some of these topics that a group of teachers are, are working with Mimi and her team to create. So, I appreciate your work on that as well. Number six is review and modify, and possibly modify graduation requirements to allow for additional student choice connected to career pathways or college. And so Mark Burns and his team have formed a graduation requirement committee who has met four times. We actually have another meeting tomorrow, I believe. And so what they've done is looked at different data from UENs, other UEN districts in the state. We've looked at other schools in our athletic conference in the Mississippi Valley to say, what kind of data do they have, what are their requirements, what kind of structures do they have in place, and then compare that to what we're seeing here in the Dubuque community. So, I appreciate the work that you're doing with that, and they hope to bring a recommendation to the ed programs committee in one of the upcoming meetings. So, thank you, Mark. Number seven, we've already talked about. And number eight is enhance, promote, and streamline reporting, staff training, and student education supports related to the issues of bullying and harassment. And so, this is a checkmark. We feel like this is a priority initiative that we've completed. We've trained all of our building administrators in the ability to conduct bullying and harassment investigations, which they're doing now in their own buildings. We've developed the Say Something webpage, which is monitored by here in the district, and we've gotten some good feedback around that page. And we actually, we know that students are feeling comfortable in using that website. And then lastly, Second Step Bullying Prevention Unit is being taught by some of our school counselors, and that's being piloted currently in two of our elementary buildings. So, our counselors are taking on that, that extra load and helping teach those, those topics in our elementary schools. So that is a checkmark as well. Any questions around student achievement and development?
I was just going to mention that this, I'm glad to see you're bringing back the graduation requirement committee. I think it's been kind of the feeling about this board and this evidenced by the young people showing up today, that the, the move towards technology and being able to get a background in your high school or middle school to be able to enter some career technical field. I often have thought that we, in our requirements, we focus so much on college prep students that we don't give enough latitude and enough choices for our high school kids sometimes. And I hope this moves us in this direction, to get, to give the kids more choice, to see what kind of fields they're interested in. I know we have a lot of things that we do at NICC, but I think that taking a look at this is a great idea.
Yeah, I think we're definitely looking at the piece around flexibility, what does that look like? But again, you know, if any requirements would change, students always have the option to take more, you know? That's still, that's an option now, and it would continue to do so as well. So, thanks, Jim. Next, we're going to move to community engagement. And so, if we look at priority initiative number nine, develop and implement a parent organization network to enhance parent and family organizations in schools. So we have a guest visitor today, and so, I'll let her introduce herself and then what school she's from, but thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And I didn't know my name was going to be up there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Meg, good surprise. So my name is Brittany Morford. I have three students in the district, all at Marshall Elementary School, one who is actually on the Lego team as well, but she's prepping right now at Hempstead for her first concert. She went there instead tonight. So, Mike asked me to come and speak to y'all about the parent-teacher organization network that we've been working on with the district from a collaboration perspective. I've been involved with the Marshall Elementary PTO for a number of years now at various levels on the board, supporting the teachers and staff and students really any way possible. So, last year when I was invited to participate in the D-Silt meetings, I was given the opportunity because I'm not a local, so I had no idea kind of how big districts function, really. So it was really nice to have this opportunity to meet more people, and I was able to then meet a lot of other people who are involved in the other schools' parent-teacher groups here in the district. So, we very quickly were able to establish that we're all doing a lot of the very same things, and maybe we're doing it a little bit differently, and maybe there are some efficiencies that could be made. So, we cornered Mike and, and anyone else that would stop them, so that we could talk to them about how do we, how do we collaborate in a meaningful way without just taking another meeting and adding another thing to our schedule? You know, we're all very busy, many people that are in these groups and supporting the schools in this way by being at the parent groups are also working parents. So we have, we have no shortage of things to do. So we want to make sure that we're, when we are able to meet, that we're being impactful and that we're able to move the needle forward with trying to either create efficiencies or make connections so that down the road, we can do the same thing and maybe create it just in a custom way per building so that we're suiting the needs in a catered way. So that's, that's, that's my opener. So, it's been very beneficial. So this year, at the start of the school year, we were able to kind of implement that plan. And again, this was a group effort. I want to give credit to people like Kelly and Kathy and Amanda and Brian and all the people that I can think of off the top of my head that have been participating in all of these conversations throughout the year. We meet twice a month at this point. We, we talk about a variety of topics so that we can, you know, how are you organizing your meetings? What are the kinds of volunteerism that you're getting for your events? What are the events that you're doing? Having those conversations so that we can have one cohesive kind of habit district-wide at, you know, at the elementary level, this is what we're doing with any type of fundraisers. These are the fundraisers that we're doing. These are the ones that haven't worked so well. And, and sharing that feedback amongst ourselves has been really an immediate benefit of having the district help us coordinate all of our, all of our people. So, I made notes. One of the topics that was very recent at one of the meetings was about finance, and that was really, really helpful because all of these parent groups are independent of the district. So we all have different kinds of ways of organizing. Marshall is a 501(c)(3). Other schools have just a collective mind of helpful people that want to make good things happen. Some others are a little bit further down the process in regards to organization. So, meeting with someone from the district to be able to talk to us about finance and how do we go about if someone, you know, in this bucket wants to become a 501(c)(3), what are those, what are those collaboration things? What are those kinds of things that you need to do? Because none of us are experts. We're all just, like I am, and I, I work in sales, so I don't know how to do all the other things. So, that's, that's been really, really beneficial. So we appreciate that the district has been able to put those resources together to us and let us be able to then take that information and go do something with it on our own to just benefit the district and our families. That's all I got. Sorry. Any questions?
That was great, thank you.
I'll just jump in for a second if I can and just say thank you to Brittany for coming, but I've had the great pleasure of meeting with this group every time they've met, and it really is one of my favorite meetings to go to. Because these are parents who are so engaged in our schools every day, and to see the energy and excitement and enthusiasm that they bring to making a difference in their building. And I think that, as Brittany said, there's been immediate impact in seeing the work that that group has done. And they got to learn from Kevin about finances, and we've talked about legislative advocacy, and we're in the process of creating a vendor directory. They're obviously using many different vendors for a variety of events, and so they can share within the group their best practices, lessons they've learned, where do you get a dunk tank from? All of those kinds of things that hopefully give them some resources to not have to recreate the wheel every time. And I think we have a lot of room to grow, but it's been so great to see the participation and dedication of that group. So I'm thankful to Brittany for coming, and it's been a really great step forward for the district, I think.
I liked hearing the collaboration you're having with the other elementary schools.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're feeding off each other, and one group might have done something that you haven't tried yet, and that's awesome.
Yes, yes, it's been very beneficial, especially when it comes to, I mean, I'm in the elementary space, so I'm a little bit, like, that's my focus. But knowing now, you know, that we have people who are feeling our pain too, because as a parent and as a parent volunteer, we, we want to do better, and we want to help out any way that we can. And sometimes you feel... And sometimes you feel a little bit like you're on an island.
Right.
So having those, like, I don't know, like, just friends, like, I've legitimately made friends through this, and we get to have sidebar conversations, and it's, it's very beneficial. It's a very good sense of community that it's, that it's investing in.
That's awesome.
Well, I think we for sure appreciate having parents involved in any capacity, in every capacity in all of our buildings. And however we can continue to work with you guys to empower those amazing students and teachers, you know, we're, we're willing to help out however. You know, so if it's a dunk tank, you want to get some of us in there, we'll, we'll do it pie in the face.
I heard him. He's in. Write that down.
We have documents.
Anderson.
He volunteered, not me.
I bring Mark and DeAire and Lisa with me. However, we can continue to support just the committee, we will, and we want to thank you guys for serving as well. So I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope you can get to the concert. Yeah, yes. And then we're going to skip down to number 12. I'll go back and talk about 10 and 11 here in a second. But number 12 is to launch the Achieve Parent Portal to engage families in the individual education program or the IEP process in new ways. And so this was a big initiative that the special education crew took over this year, and Brenda was not able to join us tonight, but she's, since, she said, she told me, like, three of the best to come and talk to us tonight.
She volunteered, yes.
She volunteered, yeah. So if you guys want to come up, I'll let you introduce yourselves and, and share your new learning this year with the board.
All right, yep. I'm Molly Powers. I'm the special education coach at Eisenhower. I've been there for the last three years. And I know one of the big hopes was to launch the Parent Portal, but unfortunately, I think that's about a year out. There have been some things inside Achieve that we're hoping to clean up as far as glitches within the process before we welcome parents into that live behind the scenes. But we did want to each kind of share some highlights of how Achieve has really honored the IEP process and made some changes in our day-to-day practice. One of the big things is that Achieve is very procedurally sound. So when we're looking at IDEA and how we should be implementing special education, the Achieve system has safeguards in place as to when you can open a certain file and when you can input certain information that really makes sure that you are following the procedures set out by the state, by the laws. The other piece that is really nice about it as well, too, is it adds a voice to the entire IEP team, where I think previously there were, it was a box you checked, or it was, let's make sure we talk about this in this section, and this is only the parents. But really, within this system now, it's built multiple ways to document concerns from the parents, concerns from the teachers, concerns that the nurse might have. And then also within the system allowed more collaboration among our IEP team. So our OT, our SLP, you know, PT and those people are able to join on some of our goals so that it's a more meaningful document than just having boxes checked, so.
I'm Heather Rath. I've been a special education teacher at Eisenhower. This is my 17th year. So for my entire career, we've used the same IEP system, so it's been rather outdated. So Achieve, it has been a learning curve for us all this year, but I want to say, when I had my first IEP in September with it, it was a little nerve-wracking, but when I printed it out and was able to share it with families, it was much more user-friendly to share with families. In the past, I've had IEPs that were 20 to 45 pages. These really condense it. And not that we're taking things out of the IEP, but before, we were repeating things or things were just the way they printed out, very unfriendly for families. So we continue to start our IEPs with the strengths of the child. And again, like Molly said, we, it, it lets us kind of get all of the team members' perspective, and we've always done that with strengths and interest of the kiddo. But previously, concerns were only we would have a box that said parent concerns, but now we can address everyone's concerns as a team. So I might have concerns a parent doesn't have, and then that might lead us to a, to a service or a goal area for the kiddos that we're working with. So when parents go through, it's a much more, like, the flow of the meeting goes right with the paperwork. We're not jumping back and forth. We are able to go right with the paperwork. We'll write a goal. We'll connect services to it. Another, just a visually appealing thing, we, within our IEPs, we have to look at the least restrictive environment for kids, and the system puts it into a percent, and it always has, but now there's a bar or a graph for the parents to see. So they can actually, you know, it's, it's one thing to see that percent, how much their kiddo is pulled out of their classroom, but now there's like a graph and a visual. And I've had parents comment that they like, like, oh, it's not that much. You can see that. And then I think as a teacher, the process to enter data on students has become a lot easier. For instance, I have some students that I have that have five IEP goals that I'm monitoring. Before, I would have to just, it would take a lot of time just clicking, like silly little things, and now it's, they're all right there. I can just put their data in, look at their graphs. And at times, colleagues share kiddo. So I might teach a kid reading, another teacher might teach them math, but it's still, we're, we're just, it's much more condensed for us. All my kids are there, whether I'm their case manager or not, and I can enter all of their data. So it's been easier that way for us, too. I think the main thing is the services are the same. We're providing our kids with the services they need. The system we're entering data into and entering their IEPs into has just changed a little bit. So we're, you know, there's still kinks to be worked out, but we are, we're happy with what we can share with families.
My ADHD brain requires me to write things down so that I don't get off on a tangent, so. Hello, my name is Brianna Cleland, and I teach preschool, general education, and special education. This is my 10th year in preschool and my sixth teaching early childhood special ed for the district. I was asked to speak on what's going well from Achieve from a preschool perspective, and as, as it's different from the K-12 world, or as everything is.
Yeah.
I can, I can currently narrow the scope of this topic to three things that, from my perspective, are just a positive shift in that paperwork end of things. Because again, we haven't changed our services, we haven't changed our delivery model, but we are, we have just changed the paperwork. First, there's a tab called the R-E-C-P, Welcome to Special Education, where everything is abbreviated. But for those of you who don't know, that stands for the Regular Early Childhood Programs. This has always been a difficult area to capture, as we in schools only really previously had the option to capture what the child was getting at school, unless it was noted on Page B or Tab I or on the prior written notice or on any of the other tabs or paperwork that we had. And this is often information that got buried and was truly not reflective of all the time that children may spend with their typical peers. However, in the new system, it accounts for all of this information within their IEP, and it no longer falls completely on the school system to provide sole access to those peers for the children. Or if there's another, if the child is in another situation where they're accessing those same age peers, such as a childcare center or a regular class that they attend. Second is a section previously referred to as the ECHO. This is short for Early Childhood Outcomes, and is one of the ways, in my understanding, that the state uses to measure progress for early childhood students in special education. However, in the past, this form often tracked, or often tacked on at the end of the meeting, almost as an afterthought, was one or two sentences and an arbitrary rating given based on a wide range of perceptions, based on mixed messages from all of the stakeholders as to how it should have been filled out. Sure, there were three separate documents containing confusing charts and diagrams and decision trees that you could use to help make that decision. The language was wordy, confusing, and clear as mud to how a child should be ranked. The form itself was also vague and subsequently did not look at the whole child, although that was the intent. Then to try and explain this to the family at the end of an already lengthy and often difficult or emotional meeting, you get the picture. On the Achieve system, the document plays a much more essential role in developing that IEP. So much of that is built into the IEP is on the first page. There are built-in areas looking at the whole child with family-friendly graphics that can be included to share all of the information that goes into these three categories. Nestled into the heart of this IEP document, it can no longer be an afterthought, and it's now the basis and starting point for the team conversation as well as the entire document within a preschool IEP. While being able to review the whole child in a skills-based format focusing on what a child can do, the whole IEP team discusses where a child may fall on this rating scale. The flow charts and statements are built in, and you have to use them. There's no choice. To make the statement, you have to use these flow charts, and they're presented in a family-friendly language that makes a decision-making definitive, efficient, and accurate across people and settings without it being overwhelming. The third thing, and in my opinion, one of the most valuable, is the document has become much more preschool-friendly. Previously, everything had to be compartmentalized into one area. You had a reading goal, you had a math goal, you had a speech goal. But we know that in preschool especially, skills are interconnected, and you can't separate them. And part of the whole child integrated, and part of the whole child integrated approach that enhances student learning. With Achieve, now providers can collab, can collaborate with interconnected goals to meet the needs of preschool students through an integrated delivery model. Accurately capturing the level of need and the different parts of a student's goal, such as a literacy goal that previously had to be just a literacy goal, but now can truly address the student's needs of who may also have a communication need. This encourages collaboration to meet the needs of students, and this new system, in my opinion, will be a catalyst for what I hope is a positive shift for preschool students' continued learning through collaboration and embedded learning supported by all stakeholders. While a shift in the new system has challenges, and the way we think, but the way, and the way we think about how, how we deliver special education and dealing with new learning and navigation has been another pivot point for teachers in Iowa, increasing accuracy in the reporting of a child's access to the same age peers, making the early childhood outcomes relevant and part of the conversation, and accurately capturing the integrated preschool model have all been positive changes that I think are happening because of this new system.
Thank you. You said that so well. Summarized it well, yeah.
Did you guys have any questions? Anything with Achieve? We're glad to hear that you like the program. And that was evident by all three of you.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a game changer this year. I think it's been nice to see the families at the meetings, especially families who have already been in special education services and seen the previous system, to be like, oh, hey, we have a new one. We know we sent you a letter kind of giving you an update, but here's what it actually looks like. And they're like, oh, I like, can breathe this, and I get it, you know?
Makes sense.
Much more parent-friendly, yeah.
Good. We know it's a challenge to do a new system, especially after you had an old one for a while, but it sounds like this is really kind of checking all the boxes for what's best for everyone, for all the stakeholders. So that's really amazing. Thanks for sharing that with us.
Yeah, much more comprehensive and bringing, I really hooked on to the part where it's allowing, you know, physical therapy, OT, everybody to be on the same page. I think that's really important to help move a kid forward, too. It's great.
I'd like to commend you for making things easier for parents. I mean, they're, they need to be part of, part of the system, part of the program for their, their child. I think my, I don't know if my ADD kicked in or whatever, but a lot of times, a lot of times in educational jargon, we use a lot of acronyms, so maybe I missed, what is Achieve, what does the acronym Achieve stand for?
I don't think it is an acronym. Our whole system is called Legacy. This one is called Achieve, so I think it's just the name of the system we use.
And maybe it's in all capitals, because we're really excited about it. Yeah. I'm not really sure.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I was just kind of curious.
How great, but it's not an acronym.
I know, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That might be a good Brenda question. Good follow.
I know that, you know, Brenda and her team really worked hard this fall to kick off this new initiative with all the special education staff, because it's a lot to undertake a new program, for sure. And I know there's been some glitches and things, as always, with something new, but I do think this is ultimately better for our students and our families, so, and for our staff as well. So thanks for everything you guys are doing, and I appreciate you presenting tonight. You made it, right?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Wish I could tell it as well as they do. I mean, that was just like, they did a great job. So if we go back to community engagement, we'll touch upon number 10. Really, that talks about school business partnerships and the mentoring programs post, in the post-COVID landscape. And if you remember last meeting, we had somebody come and talk about their experience as a mentor. But some things I really want to touch upon is, we have a new partnership with Cunningham and Butler, and they have added 30 new mentors from their organization, which I think is wonderful. There are 86 mentors that returned this year from last year, and the district has trained 90 new mentors for this school year. So thanks to Shirley and her team for, for all that work, because we know that mentors make a big difference in, you know, the day-to-day lives of a lot of our students, so.
Is it 90 and top of the 86? Or 90 total?
Yes. So we have 86, then we add an additional 90.
I heard 70.
Yeah, yeah. However, if anybody's interested in being a mentor, there is a way that you can access that on our website, because we're always welcoming more mentors into our school districts. So thanks, Shirley, for that. We are currently taking a inventory of our, our current school business partnerships and really looking at who are our business partners in our school, and then what are the next steps with those partners as we move forward? And then also working with Buick Area Chamber of Commerce to really share information about how you become a business partner and see if there's not additional interest in being a business partner with one of our schools. So thanks, Mike, for your work with that as well.
Amy, may I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
This is Nancy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is our goal with the School Business Partnership Program to have each school have some number of school business partnerships that are effective and working and being what we'd like them to be?
Nancy, this is Mike. I can speak to that. You know, I think what we've seen is that over time, schools have varying school business partnerships, and sometimes that's based on a business having a longstanding relationship with a school. Sometimes it's parent connections as families move through different schools. So we don't necessarily have a specific goal per school in terms of business partners. What we also know is that, or I guess what I should say is, when we look at our inventory of business partners, one of the things that we're also looking at is, we're looking on the school level to see what business partner relationships exist currently, but then we're looking more broadly to say at the district level. We know we have many partnerships through the Vertex Initiative, through mentoring, and to really look at those as a whole and to look at opportunities for us to reach out in a cohesive way to look for further opportunity to further those. So certainly, we'd love to have business partners across many of our, across all of our schools, but we look at building those kind of on a piece-by-piece basis. So one of the things, as Amy said, that we're doing right now is working with the Chamber of Commerce to really put a call-out to businesses. You know, they've got the connection to our business community to help us get the word out, to engage businesses, and, and in doing so, to provide kind of what I'll call a, an intake form to say, how do you want to partner with us? You know, that, that looks different for every business. It could be providing mentors. It could be donating items. It could be financial support. It could be all kinds of, there are all, all kinds of different ways that a business can be engaged with our schools. And so to really look at, and what we did with our inventory is to say, how are these businesses being involved in our community partners so that we can really get that holistic look at, at those partnerships? So the short answer to your question is, we don't have a specific goal number per school, but our goal is to look at the relationships we have and then reaching out for new relationships to make sure that we get the broadest impact across the district as we can.
Thanks, Mike. Just, just remembering back to when we first set up School Business Partnerships, I was principal at Table Mound then, and we piloted that program for the district. What we found in that was that it was easy, in a certain sense, for the school to connect with business partners in terms of recruiting and inviting new business partnerships in, because it came from the inside of the school, and there were logical connections. Sometimes it was a neighborhood, um, organization or a business or whatever. Sometimes somebody worked there, somebody's spouse worked there, and there were some logical connections which helped us to grow mightily at a school-based level. I think I'm not in any way discounting the merits of having district-wide ones, and I think there's much merit, merit to a two-layer system, and I think it is worthy of giving consideration to have each school business partner, I mean, each school have its own school business partnership. Maybe it's two, maybe it's three. There's not a right number, I don't think, nor is there a wrong number. But to have, have each school invest in inviting and mentoring and encouraging and connecting with those school business partners. And that was very helpful as the district went forward with different times when we had to invite or ask the community to support some thing the schools were, were looking to accomplish. So just a, just a point of personal privilege, I guess. So just a point of personal privilege, I guess, in terms of personal reflection, but I think a two-tiered system has much merit.
And Nancy, I would, just as a follow-up to that, I would say we very much have a two-tiered system, and that's one that we would anticipate keeping, that we know that the strongest relationships often, as you said, come from those connections, and that will always be the case. Our goal in kind of keeping and maintaining an inventory is really to look at where those possible synergies happen, and also to know that oftentimes when we have those connections through a specific school from a longstanding relationship, we're also working with that same business in another way through the Vertex Initiative, for example. And so that business is proactively reaching out in multiple ways, and so we want to also be cognizant of where that overlap exists. But you're absolutely right, and one of the things upcoming in this process will be to work with buildings to provide them with some training and tools as they do that business outreach, to make sure that we have some best practices in place as that work happens from the school level.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike.
Number 11, that is to reconnect and reengage families to their school communities. Recognizing this engagement positively impacts school attendance and achievement. And so one of the bullet items that I really want to focus on is the before-school care that has been established in nine of our 12 elementary schools for K through 5. That's something that Lisa and her principal team have worked with Dubuque Leadership Services, Y Care, and the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools to provide that support for our families before and after school, because we know that that's critical for families to have a place, because, you know, whatever time they have to go to work, or whatever time they get off work, that we have that wraparound care. And so Lisa, I commend you for putting that together for our schools this year, and thank you for that, and we'll see what happens in the future, but it's working out really well for this year, so thank you for that. Another big event that's underway is our kindergarten welcome event. So as we know, we're excited about all our new kindergartners that are about to enter into the school district, and so we have a welcome event that will happen in April that will hopefully start those strong family connections. And then the high schools have really promoted a Vertex Employer Night, as well as college readiness activities, and like fast-for-prep for students and families. And some of those things we've done always, you know, but now just to bring those back post-COVID, and make sure we're getting that information to families about how you do things, you know, for the next step for their child post-graduation. So that's number 11. Any questions with community engagement? Okay, I'm going to apologize for the next two, because you're stuck listening to me. I don't have any special guests. So, I know, sorry. I know, that's a little bit more fun, so.
Kevin's here.
So if we move to Effective Resource Management, number 13 is to engage a study committee in the planning process to develop a two-middle school model. As you know, we have that as a checkmark, because we've done that work, and now we're really just looking at what are the financing options, and then what's kind of the next step for the board. So those things are well on their way, and I appreciate the work of the Community Task Force, and everybody that's been involved in that process that we started way back in, what, August?
July.
July, yeah, July. So it's been a very good process, and I appreciate Envision's work with that. So number 14, to explore feasibility of a learning management system and augmented one-to-one computing environment at the elementary level. And as you know, Colby kind of has talked a little bit about this piece, you know, what does this look like moving forward? And so the district is really exploring what that capacity looks like, and is it something that we would implement maybe grade level by grade level? Like maybe start with our fifth graders, and then, you know, work down as funding would become available? Because as we know, regardless of our philosophy around one-to-one, funding becomes a big piece of all that. And then how do you sustain that moving forward with replacements and things like that? So Colby and his team are working on a plan, and that's why that's making steady progress, but we're still having conversations around what that looks like. And then really, how do we, you know, deal with the logistical pieces of the charging, how many are needed, where do we keep those in the classroom, and those types of things? So Colby, I appreciate your work moving forward with that priority initiative. Number 18 is to ensure alignment with financial targets to ensure expenditures are maximized to support strategic goals. Well, as you know, we talk about this frequently, but Kevin's, you know, one of the best when it comes to money management. So very confident, you know, we're making significant progress in this, as we always do. We continue to review and monitor at all times. And then, you know, with state supplemental aid coming out at 3%, it's really working on what do those projections and spending priorities come down to. So Kevin and Brian and their teams are working right now to get ready for staffing for next year, and then to move forward with negotiations that will be ready to start here in March. So I appreciate both of your works under that priority initiative. And then number 16 is to enhance district cybersecurity efforts and staff training to best protect district data. And Colby, last month, or last priority initiative meeting, Eric Johnson reported out about things that were going on at the school level. And as we know, this is always a topic at our district leadership conversations, because Colby's really keeping that at the forefront. One thing I just wanted to talk about was, at our last district leadership meeting, we've been trying to do some problems of practice at our leadership meetings, and so Colby led our district leadership team through a kind of a drill, so to say, of, hey, we're going to say that we had a cyber attack, and what do we need to do to start work tomorrow? You know, what are the things that we need to have in place? And it really got people to think about, what are things that we need to have that we don't have if something like that were to happen? And so we really had great conversations, people broke out in their different departments, or grade levels, or curriculum areas, and were able to talk about, if this happens, what's my responsibility in this? And so I think it was a big aha, because he basically said, if something would happen if the district would ever get a cyber attack, anything that plugs in doesn't work. You know, that's print, that's copying machines, that's computers, that's our tablets, that's our bus tablets to see what the routes look like, and so what do we need to have in place? And so I think people appreciated that, and really went back thinking, wow, I need to think about some things. Do I have emergency contacts for everybody in my building printed somewhere? And so I know Amy Nevens in our department here, she went and she made a, she quick, got everybody's cell numbers, and kind of made the old-school phone trees, you know, that we don't do those things anymore, but those things are things that we need to have in place if we didn't have access to technology. So Colby, I appreciate you leading us through that conversation at district leadership. And then really, he's continually to conduct the daily phishing tests, you know, just so he's constantly simulating things that could happen to us, and just keeping staff, you know, on their toes a little bit, right? Or looking at emails and things, so thanks for that. And then the last, oh, is there any questions around Effective Resource Management? I apologize.
I wanted to go back to number 14, and I wanted you to comment or make the public aware of the move in the state legislature to allow for the remote learning days. And, you know, that would happen, if that took place, that would have an impact upon us with the elementary one-on-one learning.
Yep, so currently, our state law states that we cannot have virtual snow days.
Right.
And so we know that Illinois and Wisconsin are currently allowing those things to happen. I think Minnesota is, too. So we'll have to wait to see what that looks like with legislation, but just so you know, our team is having conversations around that, so that we can be proactive, and Colby and his team are really starting to look at, if that goes into play, what does that look like? I mean, our six through 12 students already have one-to-one, so what does that really look like in the elementary setting and our preschools?
Yep.
So.
I know that our local media wrote an editorial, I believe, a few days ago, in favor of allowing that, so I don't, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a situation where parents, good from one perspective, maybe not so good from another perspective, the remote learning aspect.
Yeah, we can never make everybody happy, though, you know, right? I mean, you know, in some aspects, I think people sometimes like the fact that it's a snow day, I want to go sledding with my kids, right? And then other days, it's when you've had multiples in a row, it's like, enough, we don't want to be going to school until the middle of June either. So it's really that balance of what that looks like, so, yeah, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
And then the last section is Employee Excellence. And so if we look at number 17, we're making steady progress on a develop a staff retention plan that explores initiatives, systems of care, and enhanced staff recognition programs. So Brian and his team this year worked on exploring, having a complete analysis of our current positions with pay and titles, and really, we found that to be pretty cost prohibitive, because it was much more expensive than we had initial thought that that was going to be for the district. We continue to explore additional non-pay incentives for our staff, and then looking at, what are some things we can do for staff for flexibility, maybe from a work-from-home in a weather-related situation, or with some alternate summer schedules and things like that? So we're kind of conducting those, that information right now. We've really enhanced our district's A-plus staff recognition program. So again, if somebody wants to recognize a staff member, that's right on our website. We really strongly encourage you to do so when you hear positive things about our staff here in the district. And then we are continuing to give access to free staff wellness and brain health resources, and promoting those amongst our district staff. So Brian, thanks to your team for doing those things as well. Number 18, enhance staff recruitment efforts with a focus on generating a more diverse applicant pool for open positions. We know that this has been a priority for us for the last two years, you know, really talking about how do we find staff, you know, that look like our students? And so one of the things that Brian and his team are doing here in the spring is they're going into the HBCU Career Recruitment Fairs in Chicago and St. Louis this spring to hopefully recruit some staff for us to bring back to the Dubuque Community School District. And then lastly, the district has created a new human resource slash equity specialist position, which is helping with that staff recruitment piece. So, yeah, that's been a very good addition. And then lastly, number 19, develop systems to grow career paths and leadership opportunities within the district with a focus on Grow Your Own programming. As you remember, last priority initiative, we had one of our paraprofessionals who became a teacher for us, came and report out, and so we're continually trying to support anybody that wants to move in that direction, and then as they need observation hours or things, we try to work that into their workday, so that we can be flexible to help them to get closer to getting their degree. And then lastly, really looking at our staff as getting involved with career fairs, and then working with our Vertex coaches to promote the district's education career pathways among our high school students. So any of our students that are interested in some form of education, we're really trying to tap on the shoulder and try to get them involved in that pathway as quickly as possible. So we know that staffing right now can be a difficult piece, but I would say we're very happy with our staffing levels currently, and we have staff that are doing excellent things for kids each and every day, and so I appreciate everything that they do, for sure.
I'd like to make a comment about employee excellence as a former employee of the school district. I think it's very important to have the, establish in the buildings a positive culture for the staff members, and that includes everybody, teachers, custodians, paras, et cetera. So I'm glad to see we're moving in that direction, because down the road here, the way it looks, there's going to be an impending shortage of teachers, maybe, and maybe other employees. So this is very, very important that our schools establish this positive culture. I can speak to senior high school, that's the only school I taught in, in Dubuque School here, and as far as I can recall, we had a very positive culture going on there. And so positive that today, some of my best friends are former staff members, et cetera.
Yeah.
And hence, Jim is on the school board.
Yeah.
And they all, well, maybe they didn't, maybe they didn't vote for me. Anyway, I think it's important to maintain that building culture. And, you know, it starts at the top, so, great.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, we know culture is the most important thing, and, you know, we talk about recruiting, but retention is really at the forefront of a lot of those things. So that's why we're trying to do fun things like the flamingo and other things to keep, you know, engagement and, you know, that positive culture.
And we've had a lot of new hires in higher positions that we've covered from within, and that says a lot.
Yeah, really, that Grow Your Own.
Yes.
That Grow Your Own is important, because.
It is so important.
Yep, absolutely. So anytime we can tap on somebody to say, what's next, that's part of our jobs as leaders, so, yeah. So that concludes our 2022-23 priority initiatives for February. I know, we have one more to go, it's already February.
March 1st.
Almost March.
Yeah, almost March, March 1st, right around the corner, so, thanks, everybody, for your time. Again, as always, I appreciate the team that we have here at the district office, who really does the hard work in these priority initiatives, and do the great work for kids every day, so they're all sitting in here today, and I appreciate all of you, so thanks.
Well, thank you all for this update. It's always helpful for us as a board to get, you know, some insight and info on what's going on in the district, and tell stories to our constituents about all the great things that Dubuque Community Schools are doing, so, thanks.
Yeah.
And thanks for bringing guest speakers.
Yeah.
That's great, it's a great component.
Yeah.
Board members, are there any other items you want to talk about on this agenda today? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.